Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Cordera Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. Mr. Boyle, will you please call the roll?
Good evening. Roll call. Commissioner Rizzo.
Here.
Commissioner Bandell.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Vice Chair Metcalf.
Here.
And Chairman Chase.
Good evening, I'm here. So at this point, great. Thank God for that. At this point in every meeting, we open the meeting to public comment for that which is not on the agenda. So if you have an inclination to speak for three minutes on something that is not covered in tonight's meeting, please raise your hand or you can email into publiccomment@tcmail.org. I don't think I see any hands raised. Do you see any hands raised, Tracy?
I don't see any hands raised and no emails and nothing's been dropped. There's a Q and A feature at the bottom as well, open for questions, written questions and no open questions there either.
Okay. So we'll close tonight's open time and we'll go directly to our business item. Tonight, we are doing a preliminary review of 317 Redwood Avenue. This is a preliminary review of a proposal for construction of a new two-story, 3,207 square foot, single-family home and the demolition of the existing residence at 317 Redwood Avenue. Mr. Boyle, you would presume to start this?
Yes, thank you. Thank you Chairman Chase. Welcome everyone. And yes, as the chairman mentioned, this is a preliminary review. So the staff is just asking for planning commission to, you're taking the information and provide the applicant with preliminary feedback on issues of policy, planning and design. The commission may want to consider the following sections of the Cordera Madera Municipal Code, that dealing with design review as well as the section dealing with the Christmas tree overlay district in which this property is located within. No formal action is required or will be taken by the planning commission as this study session is just for preliminary review to get feedback to the applicants and, and feedback from, from the public as well. This project has been in the office for quite a while. It's had a few, few stops and starts. And there's been a variety of different conversations between staff and the applicant's team and staff and the neighbors. And I'm pleasantly, pleasantly pleased, I should say, that, that the applicant has chosen to do a preliminary review. Again, because I think these are valuable, valuable exercise, way to bring in information and have a dialogue between the commission, the applicant and the neighbors. As you see in, in the staff report, I've provided your plan sets, comments from, from the neighbors, arborist report, materials board and a variety of different things that supporting this application. So if there aren't any questions of, of myself, I'll turn it over to the applicant for their presentation.
Please do.
All right. Just going to speak.
Did we get the staff report? Phil, I don't, didn't remember seeing one.
Yes, the staff report was, was sent, was sent to all the commissioners electronically. It's on the, it's on the website as well and, and was sent to, you know, the link, a link was sent, sent to you all.
Okay. Okay.
Tyler and I didn't read it.
I didn't know that the, if the staff report came after this preliminary review or, or, or not, I thought that this was, we were sort of waiting to be notified that we were complete. And, and then there would be a staff report and then we would put up story polls and anyway. Yeah, we don't know what's in the staff report, but we would like to answer any questions that the commission might have on, you know, this, this project. And I'm, I'm here prepared to answer any questions and concerns. We have, we have Brad Ikestein, landscape architect. We have Zach Bott, who's the, the arborist, Glenn Durth, who's done the grading and drainage plan. And we had Dan Morgan, the owner of the property, and we are here and prepared to, you know, you know, answer and respond to any questions you might have. Also, Dimitri Rigolopoulos has, has done a, a great job of reaching out to the community and which has been difficult in these times of COVID, but we have sent out a lot of information and, and, you know, given drawing sets to all of the immediate neighbors, the same drawing sets that I think you have all received. So, and, and we've been in, in close contact with, with them. So we're just, you know, waiting to move forward and I have a 3D model of the, of the, the proposed building here on my computer if you'd like to see it.
I think the question is, what kind of presentation would you like to make beyond like the preamble that you've just provided? You have a drawing, you say, on your computer. So would you be interested in making any statements about the project? Or how would you introduce the project to us?
I suppose that I could give you a little tour around the building and a narration during that. And I think that might answer, give everyone a very, a pretty clear picture on what it is we're proposing.
Maybe we could start with a site plan, floor plans. And then, once you've seen the layout of the, of the house, maybe do the 3D projections. You know, we obviously have elevations and all the 2D, but the 3D sort of gives you a little bit more fine tuned information. So we could maybe Tyler, share your screen and start with the site plan.
I'd like to enter, I'd like to introduce myself and my project team doesn't need an introduction. But, and give a little bit of history and background of this property.
Please.
I purchased this property three or four, maybe even five years ago. It's been a rental. It's near the end of its economic life. It's, I think, around 1,100 square feet. It's impacted by the redwood. The foundation and the retaining wall are impacted by the redwood tree. That's probably going to be an issue or at least that's one of the things we want to flush out. My son currently lives in the house and I'm really anxious to get moving on it for obvious reasons. But anyway, I purchased it, purchased it and developed these plans over time, over the last several years. And we've been bogged down with other things and, and it's time to get it going. And I'd like to get some direction. Dimitri's done an excellent job of communicating with all the neighbors and listening to their concerns. And, and I know Phil wanted to have this study session to give us some guidance on, on how to proceed. So we're here with ears, but we'd like to give you our presentation. And with that, go ahead Tyler.
Okay. Do I need Phil to, do I click on share screen? Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, I will do that one. Okay. Can everyone still hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the front of the property and, and I'm going to navigate around and give you, give you a sense of it. It's the, the white parts is the surrounding, you know, terrain. And, and then this, this is the proposed house. So I thought if we, if we just, you know, spun around, we could get a really good sense of, of the, the structure and the massing and the planting in, in the immediate area. So I'm just spinning around here and I can stop at any time if anyone has, has a question. But this is, this is what we're, we're looking at. A two-story structure, sort of a, a farmhouse style and two-car garage in the front, an entry porch. And anyway, I thought a quick visual would just give you a, a good sense of what it is.
Could you, could you go around again slowly?
Sure.
Maybe if I could just interject Tyler, perhaps you can just kind of give an, an overview on, on your, your design philosophy and why you chose to, you know, this particular design, you know, relative location of the building in relation to the, to the existing building and property lines. That kind of, you know, create a big, big picture things for folks.
Okay. I, I think our idea here is that we wanted something that would be suitable to, you know, to this very specific area. This is almost a, you know, it's just a, it's on the same block as downtown, you know, Cordera Madera. It's very close to a commercial center. So it's, the idea that it was a, in, in the style of an older home that would be on a lot in a, in a, in a small town. So we sort of gave it a small town feel and, and we, we just thought that sort of a modernist home would be sort of inappropriate for this setting. Especially given the, you know, the surrounding houses. I think a modern home would, would sort of, it'd be a style that would clash with it. We also wanted to build on the level part of the property. You can see here these sort of ridges up here. This is the property going all the way up. And it's, it's steep and it would be, you know, very invasive if we tried to move everything back there and dig into the earth. And we just thought that keeping it on level ground makes a lot more sense. And, you know, making it a, a nice place for, you know, be passersby to, to see as they, as they go by. You know, with a, with a nice little front, front porch and we just sort of wanted to be a friendly, friendly looking building. What, what else? You know, we went with this, this double gable design to, to sort of give it the massing of, of an older, of an older structure. And, and, but, but still be able to, you know, have some floor space on the, on the upper floor for bedrooms. But, you know, the, the idea is sort of, you know, an, an old style home in, in the style of a home that would have been, you know, built a hundred years ago and, but not, you know, not too fancy, sort of a, you know, a board and batten farms farmhouse style. That's sort of generally what we had in mind. And and then the back of the house, it doesn't leave as much space for a great big backyard, but, but there's a nice area back there. And we thought it would be nice to have an area where, you know, you could come out and have some outdoor sitting and outdoor dining and have a little enclosure in, in, in a flat area behind it. This wall right here is existing, so we wouldn't be doing any, any excavation beyond there. And, and in fact, we're not doing a huge amount of, of excavation. And we have a, a plan, a landscape plan showing some, some new trees in this area. And there are, there are other trees that the arborist has recommended. Some, some oak trees and some, some native trees to plant in this upper area too. And a lot of this is to sort of mitigate the removal of the, of the redwood tree, which is this, you know, sort of dominant feature back there and that, that has been causing problems with the, with the existing structure. So I think that's, that's most of our thinking as far as the, the, the design idea of this house. We, we wanted it to be, you know, a sort of a older style, sort of, you know, you know, you just have a, a home with a friendly face and, and sort of a small town style. Are there, are there any questions? Should I move on to, to something else?
So we'll, we'll pepper you with questions after you, sort of through your presentation, I think.
Okay.
What, what else would you like to explain or go through?
Well, I could go to the site plan and the, the site plan would be, which I think this is what you already have in, in front of you. And it, it sort of shows the, the specifics of what we have in mind. You can see the site here from this neighborhood map, that this is sort of down on the, you know, the central part of the old part of Cordera Madera. It's a, it's really close to the, to the, you know, the commercial district and, and all of the commercial properties right here. And so again, getting, getting back to our idea that it should be a, the, the kind of house that would, you would find in a small town rather than the kind of house that you would find, you know, in the, in the suburbs. And we this, this is the, the site plan. The heavy dash line here is the existing house, which is presently, it's, it's non-conforming. It doesn't, it goes in, into the side yard setbacks. And so the, you know, the new, the new home would, would conform to all of the development standards. We're also proposing new fencing along here. The present fence, right in here, you can see that this dash line represents the existing fence, which, you know, intrudes on this neighbor's property. And so we're going to put the fence where it belongs rather than on the neighbor's property and, and redo this and also upgrade this, this, this side yard and the drainage system along there. Glenn Durth has put together a very, you know, sophisticated drainage system to solve a lot of the issues. And, and in our discussions with the neighbor here at 315 Redwood Avenue here, they, they did experience some, some drainage problems from some work, I think, that was done on, on this home. So I think there's a lot of moisture coming down, you know, this, this slope here and subsurface moisture. And so we're, we're doing all we can to address that.
You might want to point out the tree, the location of the redwood.
Yes, absolutely. Right here is the, this dash line circle here. I'll zoom in a little, a little bit closer. Yeah. This is the location of that existing redwood tree that we, that we are wanting to remove. It's, it's, I, I think it's a healthy tree, but it, it's split and it does have issues. And I think it will be problematic in, in the years to come. It also has a, a big canopy. And then it's just this whole area is just, you know, in the shadow all the time and in darkness. And we, we thought that the, the, the property would be a lot better without it. And, and I think that, you know, it, it blocks a lot of natural light, certainly to this property, but also to the surrounding ones. It is a, it is a native species, but it's not a native tree. It was, it was planted. In fact, the woman who lives at 315 Redwood Avenue remembers when it was planted. I don't remember when that was.
Actually, actually she gave it to the neighbors to plant.
Oh, she gave it to the neighbors to plant. Okay. And as far as the, you know, the, the layout of this, we tried to put all of, hide all of the, the, you know, the, the meters and the garbage and they're, they're here behind a, behind a fence. And we tried to make everything, you know, nice and tidy so that, you know, we have, we would have a nice front facade. We have a gate for a side yard passage here. We have another gate for a side yard passage here. We're planting to do substantial planting along the side yard for screening. And that has been specified in our, in our landscape plan. There's a, a planting scheme. And it specifies the exact species that we would, we intend to use there. So going on to the floor plans, there's a diagram here. I think you all have the same drawing set, but there's a diagram here that, that delineates the, you know, the coverage and the, in, in impervious surface areas on, on the site. And we're showing, you know, the existing condition and the, and the new condition. But this is the, the floor plan where we have a two-car attached garage and a, a little living room and a, in a dining room and a kitchen breakfast family room here with laundry and a powder and a pantry and, and a passage coming in off, off of the garage. On the second floor, we come upstairs and we have a little sitting area here and two little bedrooms here, a guest room here. And then this area here is the, is the master suite. The elevations don't really show a lot, but the the site sections here, we did an analysis of, of view and privacy and how it would affect neighbors. And these are site sections cut laterally through the property to see how that, how our planting has, has mitigated the, the effects of a second story here. We also did a sun study showing, you know, the, the shadows at various times of year and basically on the, the solstices and the equinox. And there's two sheets of that. And I'm going to show you Glenn's civil drawings here. And as you can see, we've gone to a lot of effort to, to, or should say Glenn's gone to a lot of effort to work out a very robust and sophisticated drainage system to, to make sure that the, the drainage is not, is not an issue. We have our landscape plan, which has been worked out and showing vegetation management, showing a, a list of all the planting that we intend to use. And not on this plan, but I have added a note here that the, we intend to, to add five new native species of oak in, in this area. And they have to be sort of well spaced, but you know, I think 20 feet apart, but we're going to do some, some planting in here. Another thing that the arborist thought was a good idea to mitigate the removal of the redwood tree. And that's, that's about it. This is a, just the topographical survey that we did, that we worked from originally. And yeah, that's the, that's the whole project. So unless you want to add anything Jared, I think that's, I don't know what else to, to say about it.
I think it's important to note that with the removal of the redwood tree, which is sort of wrecking the foundation of the existing house and will be a hazard to the new house. With the removal of that redwood tree, I think it's going to greatly improve the views to, to the, to the bay for the uphill neighbor. It's just going to lighten up the whole, that whole area. So as much as, I, I think that's a, a real gift to the neighborhood frankly.
I also want to mention that I believe we're asking for a front yard setback measured from center line. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're moving the house forward a bit and we are in compliance, but it takes a little bit of.
Yes, we moved it as far forward as, as we can do and, and still be in compliance. So.
And we're not asking for any variances.
But we're not asking for any variances. No.
Right.
Right. And just, just to clarify that a little bit for the commission and the public. Because this property is located in Christmas Tree Hill, the, the front yard setbacks in Christmas Tree Hill are variable, basically. And so one is, an applicant is able to put, put the house, you know, pretty much wherever, wherever one wants, as long as it's still within, on the, within the property. But because of the unique nature of Christmas Tree Hill, especially higher up with very narrow roads, there's a lot of advantages to having buildings right on property lines. It's just the garages, as you'll notice, a lot, a lot of garages up in the hills that are right, you know, adjacent to the street for a variety of different reasons. So yes, as, as Tyler and others stated, there, there, this project needs all of the code. And just to give a rough number, the, the old house is roughly 30 feet from the front property line, 35 feet from the sidewalk. And the new house will be, you know, 15 feet from, from the sidewalk or so. So they are definitely shifting, shifting the whole thing forward and results in a smaller front yard and a slightly larger backyard.
Right.
Among the applicants, is there any other commentary that anyone would like to provide?
No, I'd, I'd just like to say that, that we know that this is a very important key piece of property that's, everybody drives by and we're resolved to make it as nice as possible. And that's, that's, we want to make it an asset to the community.
Okay. So are you all ready to handle some questions from the commission? Say yes.
Yes, I am.
Okay. So I'm going to start with Margaret. I'm going to see if she has a list of questions that she would like to start with, if she's got her thoughts organized.
I do have my list.
Good.
Good. I, I guess first I'd like to know a little more about the drainage system. I, I live on the bottom of a hillside too. I know a little bit about the problems with drainage and I'd like to know a little more about how you're going to address it.
Well, it just so happens that Glenn Durth is here and, and he, he's, he's the one who should explain it to us, I think.
Yeah. Bring up that next few of the drawings Tyler?
Yeah.
Okay. So the way the property slopes is, as you're looking at this drawing, obviously there's a hillside on the left-hand side of the drawing and it slopes toward the street. However, the, the low point is not kind of uniform along the street because there is some slope to the street. So, so the low point for, for drainage is the bottom right-hand corner of this drawing that you're looking at. And the lot
Right here.
The lot below this, I guess it's to the east of this, is lower than, than the lot that we're talking about building on. So taking advantage of the natural topography and the way the lot wants to drain and avoid changing drainage patterns. We've kind of laid it out. So all the water eventually ends up at the street on the bottom right-hand corner of the lot as you're looking at this drawing. One of the things that should be of an advantage is that rebuilding the wall along that lot line. So we're in essence creating both a subsurface and a, and a surface barrier to prevent water from this lot flowing eastward onto the neighboring lot. We're proposing to put in a pipe system, those kind of dark, heavy line, dash lines. Those are pipes that would collect water from the roof and water from the, the west side of the house. That's, it's coming toward us from the uphill ever. Directed around to the east side of the house. And then rather than just pipe it all the way to the street, which is what we always try to avoid nowadays, we're proposing to put a drainage swell along that retaining wall. So we kind of two components along that retaining wall, a surface drainage ditch that will collect water from the backyard and let it flow along the ground surface near the top of the retaining wall. And then of course, we'll be drainage behind that retaining wall, that'll intercept subsurface water. And then eventually it'll be discharged through the sidewalk, you know, whatever doesn't infiltrate, whatever we intercept will take through the sidewalk to the street. There's really limited opportunity for a, a traditional bio- There's really limited opportunity for a traditional bio retention basin. Just because we don't have, we've got enough slope to make the thing drain, but we don't have enough slope to create the section, the thickness that we need for filtration and drainage that's part of a normal bio retention basin. We are reaching the impervious area from the existing by the use of some pavers. And you know, removal of some of those, there's a pretty big asphalt driveway there now. So a lot of that goes away and becomes, you know, part of the footprint of the house. So there is a slight reduction in the impervious area from 3,100 square feet to 2,500 square feet.
So when I was, when I went to see the site, I noticed that at that back the back line, the back dotted line, after that, the the hillside or the hill behind it is dramatically sloped as compared to the part that's going to house the building. So I guess my question is, and I just see it on my hillside, is there any way that you're going to take the water from the hillside from that dramatic slope and and angle it out to the street?
Yes, if you see there's a Tyler, maybe you can point out that existing retaining wall there along that just where the redwood tree is.
Okay.
And again, this this heavy dash line represents a pipe and you can see you've got DI number 15. That's a drainage inlet. So there are like three drainage inlets that we will install behind that wall to capture runoff coming from the hillside. And route it over toward the east side of the house.
Okay.
And then you'll see another line of drainage inlets kind of just directly on the opposite side of the wall where the red through the redwood. And that's because we want the backyard of the house to slope away from the house. We don't want a chance for water in that backyard to head toward the house. So we'll have a slight slope away from it to a couple of drainage inlets along that wall to to pick that water up.
And and will the removal of that redwood tree have any effect on that that kind of drainage or? I also have a redwood tree on my property and and so I know about their root system. And I don't have any objection to the removal of the tree. I just wonder what happens to the water that the redwood. What impact does that have, the removal of the redwood on the drainage?
Well, I'm not an expert on redwood trees. I don't know if their uptake is significant and whether there would be a noticeable difference in groundwater conditions without a redwood. I I don't know the answer to that.
But Glenn, you you've designed this backyard to drain as if there was no redwood there.
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. Um. And as I said, I just want to make it clear, I redwood trees are beautiful and I love them, but I know when I was there, I could see how dark the property is because of the redwood tree. And I guess because of of the twinning, is that what they call it, of the tree? It does almost look overgrown in the in the area that it's that it is. So as I said, I have no, I I don't like taking down a healthy tree, but I don't have a problem with it if you want to build there. Um. In the three dimensional rotation that you showed, it is the the setback of the house next door to the right on this picture. Is that a proportionate and accurate setback compared to to your property?
Are you talking right here?
Yes, one house is clearly set back further than your property house. Is that accurate or just?
It's as accurate as the as we can make it, the survey, yes. It is accurate.
Because the house next door seemed like a much larger house than what you have showing there.
Um, but the let me back up a little. Sorry. Sorry. I'm just trying to back up a little bit here. There we go. Um. This house here, it's what you're you're talking about, Margaret, right here.
I I think it is, yes. Um, there was almost a property next door, or maybe maybe I'm thinking of two houses down that was almost a state like looking.
Yeah, that's
in front and and I'm just wondering if that's if that's the setback comparison between the two.
It is. I put this thing, it's positioned according to the survey that we that we have. And and it's in the height of the ridge here is according to the survey. So it's as accurate as 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 it can be, I think. So I would attest to its accuracy.
So what is this little the little structure that's almost at the fence there?
That's a good question. It's a little
casita.
Yeah.
Like a little detached casita and the property to the right that you're speaking of is 320. That's Jackie Hubbard's house and it it's it's built like towards the back of the lot and the house is almost like it it's focused around the front yard. She has no backyard. So the property, which is a much older home, is built towards the back of the property line. And it is, it is the biggest house in the block, but it's it's set back towards the back of the property line.
Is does someone live in that?
Correct.
Structure?
But not, no. I don't think it lives in there, no.
Oh, no.
No, I think it's a it's a shed. I don't think anybody is living in that. I I'm not positive, but it's not big enough to be livable, habitable.
Okay, so is that legally placed on their property?
At the time it was built, it probably was. It's not now.
Okay. Because on the other side, on the left hand side, there seems to be other one. Well, it is for there's another kind of little shed or is you're hemmed in by sheds there.
That's a garage. That's Liz's garage.
That's a garage?
Correct. It's detached from the from the main house.
Okay. Um. When I was reading the comments from the neighbors that one comment talked about issues of privacy and the desire for clear story windows. Have you addressed that?
We have not, we haven't changed the the windows from what we had originally submitted. But I think the the biggest area is is are the windows right here and how they might affect privacy in let me back up a little bit in in this area right here. So we've addressed it insofar as we intend to put in some substantial screening there. Um, we were reluctant to start removing windows, but but we're you know, we would work very closely with this neighbor. We're in close contact with her to, you know, to address her concerns about privacy.
One of the things I'd like to propose to her, and I I think it would work well. We have about as much interest in looking in her backyard as she has in having us look in her backyard. One of the things that we talked about earlier was frosting the lower half of those windows. That's that's the bay view and that's that's the nice view. And again, we don't, we don't want, we don't want to look down. But that will be something that I will propose to her and and hopefully get her support. She's she's quite reasonable. And we have a good working relationship.
Yeah, I spoke to her this afternoon as well, too. She's on a camping trip in Oregon. But she she's been pretty supportive for the most part as well. She had a few little questions and concerns and I think she had submitted them to Phil for his review, but she's been pretty supportive for the most part.
Um. So I keep asking my questions or?
Yes. We haven't done anything to the building that to to we haven't changed the windows or anything yet in regards to that privacy issue. What we have done is planting and 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 that's that's about it.
Go ahead, Margaret.
Is this going to be an owner occupied or are you building this to sell it immediately?
Building it to sell.
And have you showed the plan, especially for the vegetation around it and above on the hillside to the fire, the fire department at all?
No, not that I'm aware of, no.
I haven't.
When trees grow up, they might pose a fire issue on that hillside.
Brad, can you can you talk to that? I want to make sure that we have fire resistant. I mean, I know acacias grow grow nice and tall, but they're they're not good.
We removed the acacia due to the fire hazardous nature of those trees. And all the plants that I have on this plant list are low pyrophitic or low fire danger. But we haven't run this by the fire department yet. at some point, we definitely will.
I I'd say that we will run this this by the fire department before we get to planning commission again and have it addressed.
Yeah, I did some vegetation management notes and this conformed when we did the plan. You know, this plan was done a few years ago. So but we need to run it by the fire department. But there's no pyrophitic plants on this plant list.
But the oak trees on the hillside, if you if you plant those, would they as they grew become a danger?
Well, we'd have to space them out. It's a pretty big hillside and as you know, it's very steep. So there's quite a lot of space to plant five oak trees on this hillside, especially when the acacia are removed. Um, but we'll have to space them out to provide the canopy clearance requirements and and make sure that they they do meet vegetation management requirements. Oak trees are considered a non pyrophitic tree.
Okay. I didn't realize that. And the only other comment that it's more of a comment than a question is that I was a little concerned, surprised that none of the comments you got from any of the neighbors had anything really positive to say about it. They were all they weren't negative, but there was nothing really, this is going to be a great asset to the neighborhood and it kind of usually we see a little something a little more positive coming out of at least some neighbors. But that's all I have for now, Peter.
Okay.
I actually got, when I did the neighborhood outreach, I got a lot of positive comments from the neighbors. But with all due respect, and I've done this before, people are tend to give oppositions, take the time to give oppositions, then take the time to give but I did get a lot of verbal support on the neighborhood outreach. With that said.
And that's for you didn't submit or you could submit to the town.
I I had submitted it to Phil as well, too. All the communications. I can resend it, though.
Yeah. Thank you. Yes, the the communications that the applicant has put out to the neighbors and the responses for the neighbors were was included in in your packet. I included those those comments.
I did read the responses. I just wasn't, I guess I wasn't seeing what I wanted to see. I have some other comments about the style of the house, but I'll save them.
Yeah, please. We'll get to commentary later on.
Okay.
Just for everyone's information, we're going to try to get through questions here and then we'll go to public comment and then we'll come back to some commentary after that. So with that said, Mr. Rizzo, do you have some questions for these gentlemen?
Um, yeah, I'm just going to start off with just some standard code questions. The the parking requirement is is two parking spaces and one could be uncovered and one could be covered. Is that the requirement, Phil?
Correct. That's correct.
So having just 15 feet in front is fine because they have the parking requirement established with the garage. Okay. Um. And that the retaining wall at the property line, I don't know if that triggers any sort of weird setback requirement in the code that I might not be familiar with. I know Larkspur is a little bit weird about, not weird, but they just have a kind of a step back on their retaining walls and a little bit more of a different requirement for side yard setbacks when when the neighboring property is below them. Do we have any such requirement or is does the plan currently with that retaining wall comply with the minimum setback?
It it does comply. We we don't have, our code specifies a six foot maximum for for walls or fences. But it doesn't really give specifics when you're having a wall, a retaining wall with a fence on top. Normally, what we do require and ask people to do is provide a buffer between. So you have you have a retaining wall and then maybe two feet, two foot planter area. And then your fence back there. So you get a little bit of a of a buffer, not such a tall element facing the neighbor that that is shown here, you know, the neighbor to the to the east or the downhill neighbor. But no, we don't have that as specific a code requirement as as you're referring to as Larkspur has.
So the step back you just you just mentioned is is not a really a requirement, but it's sort of a suggestion.
Yes.
Okay. Um. All right, and that just going back to the the privacy question that came up earlier. I I know in one of the readings, there was something about a bedroom window to the south at 315 Redwood. Could you show us where on the site plan that that bedroom window was that was in question? I think it was a neighbor that was concerned about their bedroom window.
Um. Yeah, be right here. The window is not on this line, but it's setback on on this line.
No, no, not your, not the not the new design. Sorry, sir.
I'm sorry.
The the neighbors.
Oh, I'm sorry. They are.
Oh, so we're talking about 325's window, not not necessarily the neighbor you're looking down on. Okay.
Right. It's their second floor. I hope it's shown here. I think their 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 property extends a little bit.
I I
Yeah, it's over in here. They have some windows on the second floor.
So even a clear story window would, I mean, if they were not really, really high, you'd still be able to see basically into that window from the second floor.
From from the second floor here.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, let me go back to that site section here. And
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
Really.
Even here up to up to here.
Yeah, so moving the sill up to a clear story is really not going to change the fact that you could still view into the have access to a view into the into the neighboring window. If if I'm understanding this this diagram correctly.
Yeah, I tried to sort of draw these lines to where you know, from eye from eye level here to where I assume eye level would be on, you know, in this in this property. So, yeah.
Okay. How high are the sill? It looks like they're pretty consistent. Are you guys 30, 36, 42 inches above the finished floor?
I think on the second floor, we're generally 30 inches above the
Okay. And and how high is the retaining wall on the on the low, the neighboring property line? Where that little guy standing?
Right here. Well, that that varies because
the highest point.
Yeah, let me. It's a little bit difficult because there's a there's that little garage that's it that's in the way and there's one point behind that garage where it's Um, where it's fairly high. We sort of had to extrapolate extrapolate exactly how. How high that would be. But um. Let me see if I can, I can get to that drawing for you.
Do you do you think you'd be below the four feet that that Phil that Phil had? Had mentioned um.
I think so because, sorry.
I know it's hard. There's a lot of stuff going on.
This heavy line here represents the the driveway uh uh going into. The their little uh single car garage, which is right here. And then this line sort of represents the the grade. Um, so.
I got you.
Sort of slopes up to there and from there, it's about, I don't know, um. It look, it looks like uh that's four foot eight, so it's probably, you know, close to three feet or something like that. I can open up this drawing and and.
No, no, I just, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that there's something.
Yeah, the highest point is is right at the threshold of this of this of this uh, the door to this little garage. Once you're on the other side of the garage, it's uh, you know, it it it's only if. You know, a couple of feet and then it gets, it goes up to nothing as as you go up the hill.
I think my last one is is just about the replacement trees. Um, they're all live oaks, I think, or you got or some sort of oak. Um, those root systems actually go deeper. Um, they're probably better suited for. Slopes, are they not? Because aren't the. Redwood trees. Root system sort of. I'm I'm just curious, um, if.
Oh, relatively speaking, oak trees are gonna be a little, have a capacity to develop deeper roots. Uh. And they're just less invasive. I mean, redwood root systems are so expansive, they they end up. Dominating lots. Uh, so it's not only just the trunk size that redwoods achieve, it's also just. The roots and how they take up a lot of space.
Okay.
Uh, but I think I, I don't, I don't know uh what they're gonna decide on, but I I I said, uh. I provided a few options in my last report, which was coastal live oak, big leaf maple or Calaturnia buckeye, but. Um. You know, there's other options out there. Those were just a few that came to mind.
I was just curious, I'm 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 assuming that you're gonna be specifying a plant that's got a a better root system to stabilize the hill. Which is, you know, my biggest concern with removing big trees and. Having native earth kind of um exposed could create some problems. So um, sounds like you guys are gonna specify a tree that's got a really good root system for that. Application.
Yeah, we were hoping to leave this the steep area of the lot here, um, you know, untouched. Only take out these acacia trees that are in really, they're they're not great specimens, they're in really rough shape and they're they're very. Um, flammable, so.
Tree weeds.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and coastal live oak, uh, it, let's say they do go with coastal live oak. I I think that's a good species, also because it's an evergreen, the canopy uh intercepts rainwater. So it's. Contributing to slope stability in that way, in addition to the root system.
And uh, so just go, thank you very much. Um, and just going back to the drainage. Um, the the drainage comment was from the neighbor to the east about their soupy backyard after. Um, ten hillside was developed. So it looks like you're taking care of this with subsurface drainage. Um. And surface drainage drainage in the back there. Um. Correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, that's that's what we're talking about along that property line. I did a similar drain like that and it really, really, really helped out. We found that there's a clay line not too far down from. Native grade that captures the water and shoots it down the hill. And that, yeah, it doesn't really get that far down and um, I live right behind Stella, the old Stella Spa and. It even, that clay line's right there. It's weird. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Um, so Peter, we're gonna, we're gonna open up for comment later on and I can get into.
Thank you very much. Um, Dr. Bundy, um, I know you're waiting patiently, um, so you have questions for these guys? You're on mute.
Now, these have been uh good questions that have been asked and answered. As much as I like redwoods, I think this is a pretty big tree for these properties around here and. I think they also refer to these co-dominant trunks as widowmaker trees, uh, so I can, I can understand uh. The desire to to take that out, and I think the plan for mitigation with uh replacing these is uh. Is good, and that will probably help stabilize the hillside also. The uh. Question that I would have is. Uh. I I think this is a nice house and a nice design, but where you're placing it on the property in relationship to other properties on that side of the street. That uh don't have an immediate hill to deal with. Uh, moves it too far forward and the removal of the mulberry tree uh. Sort of takes away uh some of the charm of the property. Uh, as I see other homes with uh significant trees there. It looked like the mulberry tree had been maintained for many years, but. Has not been, uh, I guess, pollarded, uh, you know, in uh. Re- recent times, and so it appears to be somewhat uh overgrown. So had you thought about. Maintaining that uh mulberry tree, moving the house back uh somewhat to enable that mulberry tree to stay there. Uh, and I think have less mass effect of the building uh as you look at it from the street and from the sidewalk.
Well, we we hadn't thought about that. The um, the mulberry tree is, I mean, if if we move the. The building back enough to clear it, um. It would pretty much. You know. Take up. You know, we wouldn't have a any any back area left. Um, and um additionally, the, it would. Also be in the front of the. The um, the garage door with uh with this design and um, we're trying to keep the. You know, meet the two off off-street parking requirement. So um, you know, the the. We're we're sort of in a pickle on how to how to save that tree. Um, I'm. Like the idea of saving it, but I just couldn't find a way to to do so.
I'd 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 like to add, there was another. I think we have the two spaces in the garage and we also have a nine by twenty. There was a note on one of the other plans. We have nine by twenty in the driveway. I would propose to move, you know, not move, but remove the mulberry and use it, plant it up here in the front, a new one. As an accent tree. I mean, the tree is not that attractive. It's it's never been well cared for. Um, but I'd.
Actually, it was, um, sorry to interrupt, but the mulberry was poll- pollarded. Uh, so it was, so that means, you know, you you cut the tree back, you essentially top it and then you. Maintain the sprouts on a yearly or every two years basis. So that tree was. Pollarded, so it was essentially topped. Uh, so it isn't really a specimen tree uh in terms of the architecture of the canopy. And I think that it would be difficult to design a driveway in a way that. Where you wouldn't be impacting the root zone of that tree too. So I think it would be difficult to. Design in a way where you uh, you keep that just because of where it's located.
Yeah.
You don't feel that uh if the house was moved back and the driveway being a. Uh permeable driveway as proposed, uh could uh maneuver around that and still have a two-car garage?
I I don't see, no.
Well, even if you're doing permeable, most of the time you still have to do some grading. Uh, to get base material down, so and even six inches of. Grading is gonna impact the roots of that tree. Uh, so permeable is good because it lets water through, but the process of doing it is still very disruptive to trees.
Well, I guess I I do have concern that the. Character of the lot is changed with removal of that tree and massing the house uh so close to the uh street. Understand that other houses are, you know, almost have a zero lot line, but those have uh. Usually have the hill directly behind them and you have to excavate into the hill to uh create the garage space. Uh. So I I guess I would uh like to see maybe that. Thought out a little bit more as a possibility for uh maintaining more of that neighborhood character that you're looking for. Uh, you know, a house that really fits in, that could have been here, you know, fifty years ago, a hundred years ago. Uh, and uh, you know, not not have that mass effect right on the street. The other concern that uh that I had was the privacy issues too, and. I think we can't depend on the planted vegetation on the east and west side. To take care of all the privacy issues, and so as you're working with the neighbors. On that to consider some of these options that you've talked about, the frosted windows and clear story windows. Uh, those, those were my uh primary concerns.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob. So we'll come back to you and see if you have any other commentary when we come back to you on commentary. Phyllis, um, I'd like to hear from you at this point.
Well, many of the questions have been asked, but I would like to ask about the rear retaining wall. And uh. You've talked several times about uh the roots of the redwood tree, which do, I mean, they do spread, I know that fact. And how it has affected the uh current house. The foundation, et cetera. And I'm wondering what effect it has had on the retaining wall. Because it's not just spreading in one direction, it's spreading back also.
It is definitely compromised the retaining wall, but I don't believe that we're gonna. Keep the existing retaining wall, especially if it's compromised. I mean, when the structural engineer looks at it, we'll, we'll get some further guidance from that. From him, but it's it's a wood retaining wall and. You know, depending on what we end up with in terms of backyard and height, I think that that'll, that'll be addressed by a structural engineer and. It'll be adequate to support what's what is to be built there.
Okay, in looking at this. And this is a good picture to look at. I see where the retaining wall is and uh. I assume right behind it is where the hill starts upwards. That's deep hill. Am I correct?
Yes, you are.
Yes.
Uh, what if you excavated back? Three feet. And then as Bob was talking about moving the home back three feet. You would still have your patio, you would still have your artificial turf backyard. And it's not like a lot of excavation would be necessary. Because I'm sure it starts as a slope and then, you know, goes up steeply. I, my house in Kenfield was like that.
Well, the, the slope behind us is is about two to one. So if we moved it back three feet, we'd raise the height of the retaining wall a foot and a half. Um, I don't know for sure, but that's very close to what it is. And I'd like to maintain a little more gentle. Uh, visual appearance. Maybe a three-foot wall and then a, you know, little. And then slope up, a little retaining wall behind that and then slope up. I mean, we're willing, we're we're willing to move the house. We have one neighbor and I I forget which one is which, but. One neighbor wants us to move the house more further forward and the other wants us to move the house further back, so. We're kinda, we kinda pick the middle and 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 we want to make sure we have twenty feet. Times two to get two cars in the driveway without the garage.
Yes.
So that's, that's how we laid out the the house.
Okay, uh, also, the um. Bushes, I guess they are. Hedges that are on either side, the rows that are along the uh. Side to the house.
Yes.
Uh, what are they? Are they pittus form? Because I know they grow very fast and upright. And they really aren't a problem.
I'll let Brad answer that.
Those are ramnos alaternis, uh, and they're a, they're Italian buckthorn and they're in. Columnar, very upright growing evergreen. That's low fire. And drought tolerant. Um, they're an excellent. They're an excellent screen plant that we can get from the nursery at. Anywhere between. Seven feet to ten feet tall at time of planting.
And how tall do they grow and how fast do they grow?
They grow pretty quickly, though.
Good.
They'll max out at twenty feet.
Okay.
More typical is fifteen feet in height. They're considered a native. I mean, they're a part of a ramnos. The ramnos family, which is a coffee berry family. Which is a native plant.
Yeah. Well, we're gonna purchase them at a good height. Because sometimes we've seen when the plants come in, we see some nice hedges and. We're told, well, they're gonna be twenty feet tall, but they don't tell us it's gonna take twenty years. We have to find out ourselves, and that's why I'm checking. If you, as I say, you said they can come as close as ten feet. You said seven or ten feet.
No, Phyllis, I'm I'm very aware of the privacy issues and the privacy issues need cut both ways. Uh, so. You know, again, it's, this is gonna be a house for sale and we're gonna be very, we're not gonna buy. Ten-inch plants that are gonna be twenty feet in ten years. We're gonna, well, if, when we come back, Brad, we'll, we'll get something specific and we'll have a minimum height. At Planta.
Yeah, that would be good.
I I'm I'm all over, I'm with you on that.
Okay, uh, most, my other questions have been answered already, Peter. I'll just wait for the comments time because I do have several comments I'd like to make.
Well, I would agree with you. Um, I want to just check with our attendees. This time and open this up for public comment um to see if any of them have any uh. Comments, uh, you can. Email the uh town at publiccomment@tcmail.org. Or you can raise your hand if you want to uh make a comment. Okay.
Hi, I'm Darrell Hawthorne has a hand raised. Uh, go ahead and unmute yourself, Darrell, when you're ready.
Hi, this is Darrell and Deborah Sartell. I'm kind of astonished by this whole conversation. Um, about how no one objects. To the real privacy concerns and no one objects to the removal of the redwood tree. This has a major impact on our property at ten Hillpath. Our main floor is roughly the same level as the second floor of this house and it's um. It's only forty feet away. Based on the site plan. Uh, the redwood tree provides tremendous. Uh, amenity to us. It provides tremendous privacy for the back of our house. And we don't really understand why it needs to come down when there are numerous ways to. Prune the tree, raise the canopy up and. And still provide. Light. Improved light coming onto this property. We also don't understand um the site plan. I don't understand it. It shows vegetation, only the new vegetation. The whole west side of the back part of this property is. A a wall of trees. If you were to stand on our back deck and look. You you're looking at a wall of trees that's forty, fifty.
Sixty.
Sixty feet tall.
And we used to be able to, I'm glad to hear that you respect views. We used to have a view of the top of the hill. That property has been left to just be a mess of fire danger to us for four years. Um. And speaking of fire danger, I'm with Christmas Street Hill Neighborhood Response Group and we are working on defensible. And speaking of fire danger, I'm with Christmas Tree Hill Neighborhood Response Group and we are working on defensible space and you're talking about putting these privacy trees between the houses within four feet. We're talking about defensible space that is five feet out, 10 feet out, 30 feet out, and we're trying to create that and you're trying, you're building it and, and our planning committee is allowing it. So I'm just a little confused here. We're working so hard to not have that happen. So I, this is not compliant with defensible space. But that alone, I mean, our biggest thing was that we didn't want to lose the redwood, but it seems like this has gone ahead. And we've been surprised since 2016, no one said, wait a minute. And now I see most of the people in the commission don't care if this redwood goes away. And it's one of our main, it's the only thing that's on that property that has been wonderful for us. So that's our issue, issues. There's several, so.
To, to reiterate, you know, we have concerns about privacy.
Can you please wrap it up? Thank you.
Whoa.
Whoa, okay. We have concerns about privacy and we want to see them addressed and they're not being addressed. And we have concerns about the redwood tree. It's our understanding it's a heritage tree. It requires specific arbors report to allow it to be taken down and the arbors report says it's a healthy tree. So we, we want to see how that's addressed and not just swept under the rug. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a reminder, this is a preliminary study hearing and it's not the final presentation at all for this application. Tracy, do you have any emails in or anyone else that has a hand up?
Thank you, Chair Chase. I don't see any other hands raised. No, no questions in the Q and A. Let me check email. No, no emails at this time either.
Okay. Well, being that this is not a formal hearing, if somebody does want to raise their hand at some point, we'd be able to entertain that commentary. But I'm going to come back to the commission to start to get some opinions out of everyone here. Even though we've had a fair share in the Q and A of opinion, I'm going to start back in with you, Margaret, in the same order we went before. And I'd like to hear your thoughts on the various elements of, of the project.
I, I appreciate that this is a difficult lot to build on. And I have an issue though with the way, even though there's no variance being asked for, it just compared to the other homes on the street that look like they're finished, not going to be improved upon or anything. It just looks like it's close to the sidewalk and it just looms there. And I think Bob expressed that it, because the tree is going to be the mulberry tree will be taken out. It just, it's just sort of looms. It's two stories. It's, it's just a very big and to me bulky looking home. And I don't think that the placement so close to the sidewalk and so different than the other homes on that, that side of the street help, help the matter either. I, that's just, that's just my personal issue with, with the placement of the home and the I, I guess I think that it's a prime location. I was, I was taken with it. It's easy to get into town. You can walk to town, which is very desirable. You can walk to Larkspur, which is very desirable. And I just think that something just more exciting and something that fits into that neighborhood could sort of be there. The double peak in the front, I really don't kind of get the reason for. And, and so I guess that, well, I guess my main concern would be the, the placement of it. And I think that there should be some consideration about moving it back a little bit just because it, if you want to build that big a home, three times, almost three times the size of what's there, it just needs to not be so aggressive in the neighborhood.
Anything else to say there, Margaret?
That's it. Thank you. I do, I do think that a lot of concern ought to be paid to the privacy issues. I think there are some there and I don't, you know, I, I take very seriously the comment that was just made by that neighbor about the fire safety and clearing, making sure that the fire commissioner comes in and looks at it and is very careful about what gets put in there.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to Mr. Rizzo.
Okay. I'd just like to start off and thank Jared and Rich's team, you know, for coming to us with a preliminary review. I think it really helps out the process, saves money. It allows everybody to get kind of a feel for what the commission is viewing at, at the current climate as well as the neighbors, gives them a time to kind of address these issues and, and I'm hoping Dimitri will go out and get some more positive or at least get some letters for the people that were positive about the project. It does help out when we get into a formal meeting to have some letters that are, that of, of support as well as, you know, some of the other letters. And you know, I'm, I'm kind of back and forth about the, the sighting of it because if you look at the, this, the, the neighborhood fabric of this street, all, all the houses on the other side of the street are even closer than 10 feet to the street. And they've got the same situation as three, not the same situation, but so I, I think, you know, there's a blessing that there's a huge estate next door and that it helps out with it not feeling like it's right on top of the, of the neighbor. But it's, it's also affecting the fact that we're, we're commenting on the fact that it's, it's so different. But if we do look at the rest of the neighborhood, you could see that most of the rest of the neighborhood is very close to the, to the street. So, you know, you could find that, that it is in the nature, in the characteristics of this particular neighborhood to be where it is. And I do know that, you know, excavating the back of the hill could be costly and it could cause other, other environmental issues.
I'll take that.
What's that?
Sorry, excuse me. No.
Yeah. So, you know, like I said, you know, I think you could cause a problem by, by moving it back. But, but I do, I think that that's something you guys should just take a look at and, and listen to some of the other comments from the other commissioners. As far as the privacy goes, I think it would be really helpful to have maybe pictures of some of the landscaping and how big, big, big the, the trees are with the neighbors and showing them kind of where they are. Because I do believe that the comments from the, the owners of Tan Hillside Path, Hill, Hillpath, you know, I, I think what, what you're doing is actually taking away some of the, the issues with the, with the plants that are, that are fire hazards and you're, and you're actually adding some vegetation that's going to help stabilize and help them with some of the privacy issues that they're talking about. So I think, you know, you know, maybe, maybe, you know, sitting them down with the actual plan and how big the, the, the trees are that are going to go in could help establish some positive feedback from the neighbors that are having these issues. And, but as far as design goes, like, you know, I, I think it's very, it's very, people want larger houses. Today, they're, you know, the future of these, of our neighborhoods are, are going to be larger houses. We've got, we've got families with, with two, two people, two income families and, and, you know, at least one of them typically work at home. So I think we're going to find that, you know, a lot of the presentations are going to be larger homes and then how to break them down on the site. I thought, I, I actually thought the house, they did a really good job to fit everything in it. Set back a few features using architectural elements to break down the mass. So I thought they did a pretty good job with that. I, I do find that that style is pretty attractive to my eye. And the finishes look, look premium as well. But I think that, that, you know, the biggest issue that I would probably have is just working with the neighbors on, on the landscaping and the privacy issues. As far as the sill heights go, you know, even what I was trying to say is the 325, since they're above you, and if you did a clear story anyway, you might have privacy issues regardless. So I think just kind of explaining your design with them, if you do decide to present something with a lower sill height, that they understand that a, a taller, a taller window in that same location may result in privacy issues as well. So, you know, good luck with kind of resolving those issues with the neighbors. I think that, that, that's your key to getting this approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate the commentary. It's very thoughtful. Dr. Bundy, do you have anything else to add to what you previously said?
The house itself I really like. I think the, the double gable, I was wondering how they were going to do the drainage issues on that, but the cricket that incorporates a skylight for the upper level, I think is really quite nice, quite nice feature. You know, I think the way they've got the, the layout of the lower and upper floor is quite nice. I think it'd be a very desirable home for anybody. Again, they talked about the idea that they wanted to look like a home that could have been built many, many years ago. I think having it that far, far forward takes away from that, given that many of the homes on the, that side of the street where they have a level area allows them to have some more of a front yard and trees in the front yard, which really add to the charm of Redwood Avenue and Christmas Tree Hill. Margaret commented that it a difficult lot to build. I think it's a difficult lot to build a big house on. And we're sort of going for a big house and trying to do it just on the level or more level parts of the lot. James talked about the houses on the other side of the street are much closer. And that's, that I believe the characteristic of the slope as they're really on, on more of a slope and have to really have a garage at street level. And that's found in many of the homes on Christmas Tree Hill where they have a steep slope going up behind them. So again, a nice home, we have to work on the privacy issues. And as Darrell Hawthorne said, we have to make sure that they haven't created a defensible space problem for 317 or their neighbors with the vegetation they're proposing on the, the east and west sides for privacy. Again, I'd like to see if this can't be set back and preserve the mulberry tree or setback further with some additional trees to make it fit in with the other homes in the neighborhood. That's it.
Thank you, Bob. On to Phyllis, your commentary on this, please.
I guess I'm the odd person out because I don't care for the design. My first thoughts when I saw it was the architect never saw a peak he didn't like. And you've got two peaks in the front, two peaks in the back and then two dormers, one on either side. I think it's choppy. And I think Margaret used the right word. It looms at you. It it's overpowering in a way. And I would like to see it softened in some way. You know, sometimes perception is bigger than reality. And the perception of this house is that it's coming at you and overpowering you as far as I'm concerned. And I'd like to see something done about that. I agree about the clear story windows may not be the answer. I'm looking in, I, the, well, there is that building at 325, that extra building, whatever it may be. I was going to say, if there was a question of the hedges being too close, being a fire problem with the clearing that we're talking about now, maybe something could be worked out with that neighbor to put the hedges on at 325, being paid for by the developer. You know, if, to help with the privacy, that's just something to consider. If it looks like the space is there except for that small building, whatever it may be. I, I find the windows very large in the front. I am assuming that they could be made smaller. And as I say, all in all, I just, maybe it would help, and I know people want large homes, if the size was reduced a little bit. In the sense that there would be more space around it, more space in the front, more space on the side. You know, taking it in a foot or two on the sides and in the front might help. Because with it so far forward and with the style, it really does come at you, the bulk of it. And I'd like to see that reduced. And that's about it, Peter.
Thank you very much, Phyllis. I think that for my part, I'm going to take from everyone's comments in some way. And I think that first off, the building is a little close to the sidewalk and that if you were able to create 18 feet from the sidewalk back, you'd be able to get a car there. I'm sure that people are going to park in the driveway more often than not. And instead of sticking out into the sidewalk, it would be appropriate if there was space out front for a car to park in the driveway without blocking the sidewalk. I do agree that the house does loom. It's awful large on the front. And I think for the park-like setting that's created on that block with the 325 house being back so far, that it would help if this house were set back farther. So context is everything here on this lot. I, I like the design as a whole, but it's just too big for this lot. You've maximized out the square footage just about that we can have for FAR. Your doubt, your underlot coverage percentage, but the the total square footage of the house is significant. And I agree that that's going to be necessary for homes of the present time and the future. I would ask that you look at ways of staggering the design of the front in such a way that it might not loom so much. I, I hate to see you give up backyard, but I think you either need a bigger retaining wall in the back or and, and or push the house further back and or reduce the size of the house. I think that the window sill height is low for most homes, but it looks like that was proportional to the upper story. And I understand why that came about, but I would encourage you to raise those sill heights so that privacy would not be such an issue. And they would be, there would be smaller windows up on the second floor. If the redwood does get removed, I would like to see that mitigation required part of the project or a total commitment for that. Somebody's got a lot of background noise there. The the property, according to the neighbors, has been neglected somewhat. And that's too bad in service to your neighbors. I would ask that you figure out what that is that needs to be done and reduce. and reduce the fire risk, um, to have three visits by the, uh, fire chief, uh, for this purposes, two visits too many. Um, I'd like to hear that that has been addressed. So if it were a native redwood, I would understand it, but, uh, keeping it, but I, I do agree that it's probably too big a tree to, uh, be able to build around. It'll destroy anything that is there. Um, but I think that appropriate replacement, uh, planting is absolutely necessary. So, um, it seems like the drainage has been well addressed and, um, um, the privacy issue is a toss-up between screening and fire hazard. So that's something you have to work out. But, um, it is good and I appreciate that you guys brought this for in for a preliminary review. Um, I think that, um, if I looked at it as a formal application, I would ask that you take it back for, uh, revision. So it's good that you're here tonight to talk to us about this. So with that said, um, I don't see any other hands up or anyone else, uh, coming to the forefront. Tracy, do you have any other commentary coming in?
I'm checking here. I don't see any raised hands, um, nor are there no open questions.
So with that said, um, Phil, do you feel like we've, uh, given enough feedback to the applicant here? Um, to, uh, work with?
Uh, yes, I think you've given, uh, a lot of, a lot of good feedback to the applicant. Um, and yeah, I'm, I've taken, taken note, so, um, I'm, I'm satisfied.
Okay. Uh, let's see, Mr. Morgan, are you, uh, okay with what, you know, you heard tonight? That you have enough to work with? Not that you like it, but have you got enough?
Oh, no, 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 no. I wanna, I wanna thank, I wanna thank all the commissioners and especially the Hawthorns for the, for the productive input. Um, you know, we looked at a contemporary design for this and we looked at traditional design for this and, you know, um, no, I, I'm very thankful for the input. We'll, we'll be back to you with, uh, your, your concerns, all the concerns addressed as best we can. And what we can address, we'll, we'll come up with some mitigation measures for it. But thank you very much. I appreciate the input. I appreciate the planning session. I think it was very constructive. And, uh, we look forward to a smooth, smooth process from here on.
But I, I do wanna thank you, as I think all the other commissioners would, for a, a good preliminary set of plans. This is a good package that gave us enough to chew on.
Good.
It's a good presentation, so thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. With that said, we'll close this business item and we'll move on to our next agenda item.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Dr. Bundy, is it your turn to, uh, report on the council as you said?
Uh, yes. Uh, the, uh, council had a very interesting meeting. There were several things that were of, uh,
Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Direct concern to the, uh, uh, planning commission. Uh, there was a, a long, uh, sort of running, uh, list and plans for the code enforcement officer and administrative fines, uh, and be able to implement those. Uh, and this was for first-world problems such as, uh, uh, noise ordinance issues related to leaf blowers or other items, as well as dogs off-leash that the code enforcement officer was enforcing. Uh, and then also, uh, building code issues, uh, where, uh, uh, there's some infringement either in what was done. And, uh, this would result in a fine. The thing of most significance to the planning commission is that, uh, there would be an appeal process so that the, uh, uh, person appealing, uh, the fine or the administrative judgment, uh, could go to a, uh, 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 council that, uh, would oversee this. And that council would be composed of one, uh, town council member and two planning commission members. Um, particularly two with experience in building and construction. So Peter and James, uh, you know, you two would probably be the selected ones for that because of your background and experience. Uh, so that, uh, uh, that, that is gonna pertain to us. The, the other, uh, uh, item that was, uh, important, of course, was the, uh, RENA, uh, numbers. And Adam, uh, and, and others had put together really a nice, uh, information packet in the staff notes about, uh, how these numbers came about, what they did to come up with the numbers. And, um, in particular for Corte Madera, it's 710 in this next, uh, eight-year plan. Uh, and that, uh, what to do if you want to appeal this? It sounded like in reading the packet that was very detailed that, uh, resistance is futile. That, uh, you know, at the best, you might be able to have a small number knocked down. But, you know, you're still not gonna be able to make that. As I read it and looked at it, uh, you know, it seemed to me that, you know, we shouldn't really spend so time trying to appeal it, uh, because, you know, it wasn't gonna benefit us and we still wouldn't get the, the numbers that we could really work with. And so, uh, we're gonna, I would see us as being in the same shape as everybody else that wasn't able to make their numbers, uh, unless, you know, one community had some, you know, unusual, you know, occurrence of, uh, a mall shutting down and, you know, turning all into housing. Uh, but the, uh, uh, town council, uh, really wanted to appeal this. So I think Adam is working on that appeal process. We'll probably hear, uh, more about that, uh, as time goes on. And those, those were the, uh, the big items in relationship to the planning commission.
Okay. Uh, well, that's fascinating stuff, Bob, particularly about, uh, uh, the RENA numbers. I look forward to hearing the appeal.
Peter, I, I,
Yes. Go ahead, Margaret.
No, I'm sorry. I interrupted you. I thought you were finished.
But no, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, I had the meeting before then and I wanted to, uh, report on that meeting.
Please do. Yeah.
Shall I go ahead? I didn't interrupt you. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The meeting that I went to was on, um, May 18th. And it was, um, it was interesting because the police, um, chief gave his annual report on what was going on. And he, um, he said that in 2020, the change was basically, uh, came about in how they do policing anymore. And also how, at the same time, they have to keep the police force safe as they do their policing. Um, there was a 29% service call reduction during the pandemic. And most of the service calls come from the town center, the village and town park. And, um, the thing that I found most interesting was during the pandemic, there's been an uptick in speeding. So apparently because there are less cars on the street, people are going faster. They talked, there was, um, uh, talk about the, uh, climate, um, the climate plan, I, I forget what, the climate adaptation assessment, that's what it's called, which was adopted. Um, they, they talked about the evolution of the plan and it's, uh, mostly, uh, in the projected sea level rise. They also talked about shoreline adaptation and different planning alternatives. Part of that plan is going to be wildfire mitigation. There is some, um, discussion that's needed about undergrounding certain, uh, electrical things. It, it wasn't a very long discussion, but, um, there were a lot of, uh, what, what they're gonna do, they're gonna start doing what-if scenarios and try to work, um, plans around what-if scenarios, which I thought was pretty significant. Um, then a great deal of time, huge amount of unnecessary time, in my opinion, was spent talking about, um, outdoor furniture for the town park plaza. What's there? What's going to be there? They wanna move the cement tables to the playground so that they can put new kinds of furniture there. Who is gonna be providing the furniture? Um, who is going to take in the furniture at night? And no one from the town council is willing to take in the furniture every single night. I just want to know. No one's gonna do it. And they think that they can get, um, the people at the cafe there to do it. Because the furniture will add to their ambiance there. I have to tell you that, that was the main topic of the night. And the, the meeting went to 10:30. Um, the thing that I found interesting after that was a discussion about free speech issues. Because there had been a request to put up, um, during, uh, Pride Month, a lesbian, gay, transsexual, transgender flag on the town hall. And what came about after that was that there really needs to be a policy developed about, around, um, the use of the flagpole. Because apparently there are some state regulations about what can go up on a government building. Which I didn't really know about, but, um, it was very, uh, interesting to hear that discussion. A lot more interesting than the furniture discussion. Um, at the end of the furniture discussion, actually, they did authorize a $25,000 purchase for outdoor furniture with the town manager overseeing it. And no, no resolution came about as to who was gonna take care of the furniture once it was purchased. But that was the meeting I attended and it, it did go for a very long time.
Sorry. But, yes, um, that was all worthwhile, Margaret. It's always great to hear your report. So Phyllis, you have some things to report out.
Yes, I stopped laughing so. Uh, first, I'd like to respond to something that Bob said about, uh, the, uh, RENA appeal. I agree with you. Nothing's gonna change, but it does serve a purpose in the sense that it did make an issue and emphasize the size of the flood plain in Corte Madera. And when we don't, which I'm sure meet, I thought it was 735, um, homes that they wish to have built. And ABA comes after us, we have at least established a record of why we have a problem. So in that sense, it's good, but as far, as I say, I agree with you 100% that, uh, ABA's not gonna pay attention to the appeal at this time coming from one group. Um, I did wanna give you an update on what Sacramento is doing to, R1 zoning, both SB9, and that's the, uh, bill that each lot can have an ADU on it or, and build a duplex or split the lot in equally in two, so there could be four buildings on what is now a single residence lot. And SB10, which is the bill that says you can, uh, put an apartment house of up to 10 units in R1 zoning. Unfortunately for local zoning, both of them have now passed the Senate. Our own state senator is a co-sponsor of SB9. And they are both now in the assembly, working their way through the committee. And they're probably really, there is a group that made up of, uh, council members around the state. It started in Southern California that is working together to lobby as a group to maintain local control. And unfortunately, not one member of our council has joined the group. Uh, there is a member from, uh, the Council of Mill Valley who's been very active on it. And I would like to see them do it. Um, I sent all of you, uh, Dick Spotswood's column that appears today where he really goes over some of the things that are happening to local control and what is happening to R1 zoning. And we can't just sit back and bemoan it. We're gonna have to be active. And our council members who spend two and a half hours talking about furniture should be, get active in trying to save the zoning. Someone else is not gonna do it for them. It's something we all have to stand up to and not talk about it. Do something. And that's my report.
Stressing, to say the least.
Peter, can I just say something about that? Um, and it's something that I know a little bit about because I'm on one of the state appellate committees, um, for my, uh, section of, uh, family law. And appeals do mean something. And, um, if you get a published opinion, it means something even more. But it's, it, if you want to object to something, you have to be willing to go through the entire process and put in the effort. And appeals are hard things, but they're necessary things because it really focuses the, uh, reasons of, of objecting to something or promoting something. And I'm really pleased that the town council is going to appeal it. And I think that, um, we all have to start standing up for what we believe in. It's time to be active in these kind of things.
Um, I wanna ask, uh, Mr. Boyle here, um, Plan Bay Area 2050 is taking public comment. Is that a place at which it, uh, can be affected?
I, I think it definitely wouldn't hurt to, you know, uh, to submit comments and, and be involved in that process. Um, Plan Bay Area 2050, um, I don't, you know, I think, um, I think the appeal of our particular numbers is obviously much more specific and much more direct. Um, dealing with, you know, our town, of course. Um, so I think, I think that's a more, um, probably a more fruitful process. But I certainly, certainly think it would, couldn't hurt to be involved in, in Plan Bay Area 2050 as well.
Uh, Mike McGuire is our rep, is that not right?
I believe so, yeah.
But Mike McGuire is the one who goes right along with every one of the bills that Weiner carries. He's on that committee and he believes in this. I, you know, one thing, Peter, I didn't mention, both SB9 and SB10, which is talking about putting more buildings on single-family lots. Neither one of those bills even mentions affordable house. And yet, you know, this is the thing that we've talked about so much, newspaper articles and stuff we see about. We need more affordable housing. And yet here are these bills coming through. What they did is when SB50 failed, they just broke it up into sections. And that's what we're seeing now, these sections being approved one by one with Mike McGuire gung-ho. At this point, since it's in the assembly, if we're gonna contact anybody, it should be Mark Levine. Cause he has not voted yet.
Okay. So in round numbers, I thought I read somewhere that the RENA numbers in this cycle are somewhere in the 440 or 50,000 unit number for all of the state of California.
Yeah, they're really way out of line.
And it's double of what it was in the last cycle.
More than double.
So what I, is there a rationale why they doubled it, uh, from what it was?
Not one that I have heard and I read through. I get all this stuff from Sacramento on a weekly basis and I read through all of it. And I see what's coming out of other groups. And it doesn't seem to be a rationale except the fact that there, we need more housing. And yet we're seeing the popular
And yet we're seeing the population of the state diminish a little bit. So it's interesting to see what they're trying to prove. And just looking at our town, whether what Bob said 710 or what I thought I saw 735, I can't see any way we could achieve that. I mean, ADUs would help because they do count. But I cannot see when you consider, you know, the flood problems, the fire problems. How about the infrastructure? The water hookups? All of these things which Sacramento was doing nothing to alleviate? How we can in just our town do 735 units? I think it's 869 for Larkspur. And a couple of thousand percent refilling it just, it makes no sense. There is no realistic reason to expect this can be achieved.
It's 725 units, according to Adam's staff report and Larkspur is at 979. Sandra fell at 3,220.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
What is the penalty if if developers don't come to develop? I mean, you know, we still have to get people interested in developing and if they don't come in, what what does the town get penalized in in a fashion or what actually happens?
It depends. They they do in a way they they hold back money we could get. They add on more for the next cycle. I mean, I don't think they find you. I mean, it would be hard. You know, ABA is not the state, you know, that you were talking more good about the state and going through appeals process. ABA is an organization that takes care of transit and housing. There used to be two separate organizations. I guess we could appeal through the courts.
Well, there has to be lawsuit first.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You have to appeal towards the court. Just writing a letter of appeal to ABA, it's not going to happen. And I listened to the fellow, Adam gave me his name. I don't remember. The fellow who's in charge of these things for ABA and I listened to a report he gave, which Adam had heard previously and he couldn't even really give justification except the fact we need more housing. There's a lot of homeless people. Well, many of the homeless people need things like Casablanca. Not a house. Because they can't afford it. So it it just doesn't make sense in considering our current conditions in which we exist now, not only Corte Madera, the entire state.
Well, Adam, my chastise us for discussing this so much here. But I have to sit here and ponder the fact that the 725 units or whatever it is, 700 and some units amounts to a 7% increase roughly for the town of Corte Madera. Corte Madera has grown at about 1% over the last few years, one to 2%. So it blows me away that anybody would impose that kind of growth penalty on a community. And I think that's across the board what they're doing. So I can't believe that it's and to your point, it is not for altruistic rationale of providing low income or housing for people. This is for some other agenda. Dare I say that out loud?
Well, I suggest I sent each of you a copy of Dick's column today and Dick lays it out very well. He ran out of space to talk about SB10, but he's got everything else in there, including ABA, Rhino figures and other things coming down from the state. And I think it's a very good overview. And I've shared with Jim the slides and stuff showing what it would look like building because when we talked about our arts committee, both Jim and Rich Pearlstein were interested in those papers that I had. If anybody else wants to see the things, there are slides that were developed out of Southern California showing what happens to lots when you start subdividing them and explaining SB9 and SB10 very clearly.
Okay.
So just let me know if you want a copy and I'll be more than happy to email it over to you.
I would. Yeah.
Okay, Peter.
Thank you. All right.
Sure.
And you have one already, don't you, Phil? Didn't I send it to you?
I don't, but if you could send it to me, that would be great, Phyllis. I'd like.
Okay, because I know Martha had it. So I'll just send each of you one. How's that? If you already have it eliminated, how's that?
Thank you.
And Phyllis, I'd like to see it.
Yeah, that's what I would send everybody.
Yeah.
So we have two sets of meeting notes to approve. We have May 11th and May 25th.
Move, approve.
All right.
Second.
Voice vote. Okay. Well, we won't rehash anything else here tonight, but we've kind of gone over our limit of rehashing or talking about.
Philip, has there been any word of when we're going to be back in council chambers?
There, there hasn't been any word. I heard town manager Gussamano maybe talk about possibly September. It's kind of a target, but I think they're trying to you get all of the different, you know, commissions in in line. And and obviously I imagine there's some technol- technological fixes that need to happen. You know, if you have, if you have half the commissioners and have home and half at home, you know, how do you, how do you interact? And so I think there's, there's all, all many things need to be worked out, but I think.
We won't do away probably with the ability to allow the public to participate remotely. So Rebecca has some work to do with that as well.
I mean, it would make sense for start maybe to have the council or the commission members there at town hall, but have the audience participate remotely. You know, that might be a start and work into going back to eventually the the type of public meetings we used to have.
We got a notice at the county today that that from Matthew Heimel, who's the chief CEO. And the county is almost going to open up entirely July 15 county buildings. And he also sent a note that people in the buildings could be without masks if they're fully vaccinated. That was, I don't know how they proved that, but that's what they said.
Well, we were all up on the dais with our laptops and we all had a camera on each of us. And then there was the room cameras going at the same time.
Right, right.
That would be quite a bit to manage, but bandwidth on the council chamber might overload. Five or six laptops going at once. Okay, so I'm all for that. I hope we can do it as soon as possible. I'd really like to have everybody to look at and talk to. See, I think it makes a difference. It would for me.
I agree.
All right. Okay, so we'll adjourn tonight's meeting. We'll say good night to everybody.
Good night, everyone. Good night.